Planning and Highways Committee meeting this afternoon. I'm going to hand you over to Abby First to announce the housekeeping arrangements.
Thank you Chair. In the event of the fire alarm sounding, please take instruction from staff and stewards. The assembly point is Tudor Square. Please can I request everyone to switch mobile devices to silent mode so as not to disturb the conduct of the meeting? The meeting today will be webcast and the recording will also be available for people to view later through the council's website. It is also possible that Sheffield Live TV will record and rebroadcast this meeting. While ever the meeting is open to the public, photography, video and sound recording of the proceedings is permitted, however, the Chair has discretion to withdraw or suspend this permission, for example if the recording is disrupting the conduct of the meeting or is being undertaken in a manner which could capture personal information, or in the event that a member of the public participating in a meeting objects to being recorded. Thank you Chair.
Right, could we now ask all members to introduce themselves? And I'll start with myself. I'm councillor Linus Chapman, councillor for Mosborough Ward and co-chair of the Planning Committee.
Laura Moynihan, councillor for Manor Castle Ward.
Mike Chaplin, councillor for Southie Ward.
Peter Price, councillor for Shaggy Green Brightside.
Tony Downing, councillor for Mosborough.
Hello, my name's Diane Hurst and I'm an elected member in Richmond Ward.
Councillor Henry Notteage, member for Hillsborough Ward and substituting for councillor Bernard Little.
Roger Davidson, councillor for Ecclesall Ward.
Barbara Masters, councillor for Ecclesall Ward.
Alan Woodcock, councillor for East Ecclesfield Ward.
Richard Williams, a member for Stannington Ward and substituting for Cliff Woodcraft.
Thank you everyone. Right, do we have any apologies for absence Abby?
Thank you Chair. We have apologies from councillor Gary Wetherall and Diane Hurst is subbing and Cliff Woodcraft and councillor Richard Williams is subbing. We've also had apologies from Bernard Little and Henry Notteage is subbing, but Bernard's asked me to just read out his apologies if that's okay Chair.
Yes, that's fine.
Bernard, apologies, read. I apologise for non-attendance at this afternoon's committee meeting. I'm unable to attend due to a recent road traffic accident that's involved my wife and members of her family. I am needing to support their rehabilitation and their everyday needs. I'm also recovering from surgery and have been advised to reduce my mobility until the effects of the procedure heal. Thank you Chair.
Chair, Chair. Ibi Ula is not here. He's asked me to give his apologies, thank you.
Thank you. No items for exclusion of the press and the public today. And item number four on the agenda, declarations of interest. Are there any members who wish to declare interest in any items on the business? Councillor Williams?
Thank you Chair. Yeah, as a member of both the Communities' Parks and Leisure and Charity Subcommittee, I sought advice, legal advice, as to whether it was appropriate for me to partake in item 8A. And the advice given back was that as decisions made by those committees were taken before any planning application was submitted, and that therefore at that point were planning implications discussed in those two meetings, it was appropriate for me to participate in the discussion on the basis that I would base my decisions on the officer's report and discussions we have in this chamber today and any public representation from today. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Williams. Councillor Chapman?
Thank you Chair. All members of this committee, you know, we're all part of Sheffield City Council, so we're all responsible for Hillsborough Park, so to that extent, we're all mindful that we declare an interest on that matter. But my understanding is that the legislation around that does not prevent us from taking part in the decision-making. In addition to that, I received an email from Madeline Rooney.
Councillor Downing?
Yeah, mine's similar to Richard, councillor Williams, I'm on the Communities' Parks and Leisure Policy Committee, but as Richard has said, I can still take part in this debate and decision-making. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Masters. Councillor Notteage?
Thank you Chair. I'm acquaintances and close friends with many of the objectives to item 8A, and after quite a lot of reflection, I think it's best if I recuse myself to, due to a lack of impartiality on that one.
Thank you councillor Masters. Great, go on. Okay. Item number six on the agenda, going, oh sorry, item number five. Minutes for the previous meeting. I think it's...
Sorry, I was going to sort of raise a point about page nine, but I didn't know if he'd finished speaking.
Pardon? Sorry councillor Masters, not quite sure.
Sorry, I assumed that the next item was going to be five minutes of previous meeting, and I've got a comment to make on it.
Okay, fine. Okay, right. Minutes of the previous meeting, pages nine to fourteen. Councillor Masters then.
Right, and it applies to councillor Davidson as well as myself. It says that we declared about item at seven C, which is the correct number, except the description refers to seven D. So can it be amended to comment that it was in relation to the coach house, three oh six Dobbin Hill, rather than another place? And it applies to both of us.
Yeah, that's Graves Park, where is Ecclesall.
Yeah, three three and three four.
What page is that?
It's page nine.
Page nine.
Item three point three and three point four.
I can make that change Chair. Thank you. Councillor Masters. Any other comments on the minutes? Right. So item six site visit, so the next site visit will be on Monday the twenty ninth of April, ten o'clock. Meeting, thank you. So we now move on to item number seven, tree preservation order, number four seven three at Wan Stratford Road Sheffield, S ten three LR. We've got Vanessa.
Thank you. I'm seeking confirmation of tree preservation order number four seven three, which protects six individual trees at Wan Stratford Road in Sheffield. A copy of the order can be found at appendix A. The TPO was served as a result of information given to the council by the public on the twenty third, twenty three, that the trees at the park were in the process of being removed. The property is adjacent to the Ramall Conservation Area but isn't within it, so the trees had no pre-existing form of protection. The site was visited by myself as the community tree officer who sits within planning, and information gathered from tree surgeons at the site visit indicated that all of the trees and the shrubs along the boundary of Tom Lane and Carset Kilcrezm were intended for removal from the garden, numbering sixteen trees in total. Of these, several trees along the boundary with Tom Lane had already been felled or de-limbed to leave a standing stem at the time that I arrived at the garden. My recommendation was that removal of all of the trees would have a detrimental impact on the amenity of the area, and it would be expedient in the interests of amenity to make the trees subject to a TPO and thus prevent their removal. It was also my opinion that several of the trees on site may not have the requisite amenity to be included in an order, but the conditions under which the visit was conducted, an emergency situation and also during Stun Babbitt, precluded the sort of full inspection that would be needed to fully ascertain which trees to protect. Consequently, I recommended we serve an area order which is intended for short-term protection only, until such a time as the trees could be individually inspected and further assessed for their suitability for protection. That subsequent site visit was conducted by myself on the third of November and was carried out in the presence of an arboricultural consultant who was acting on behalf of the homeowner. This revealed that five of the ten trees fronting Carset Kilcrezm were of insufficient quality to meet the highest standard necessary to be included in a defensible TPO. Four of the trees fronting Tom Lane were also of insufficient quality to be included due to being left as standing stems by tree surgeons prior to my first visit. A recommendation was made to vary the original order so as to remove these trees from its schedule and therefore to remove the protection of the order from those trees. Since the order was varied, those trees lying in Carset Kilcrezm and Tom Lane which were no longer protectable, the order have been removed. A variation, sorry, a variation order was therefore made on the twenty first of December twenty three, protecting a total of six trees. It is this varied order that I seek confirmation of today. You can see images of some of the trees that were excluded from the varied order due to their poor condition within appendix D of the report, and also images of the remaining protected trees within the same appendix. We received one duly made objection to the area TPO, that was received on the thirtieth of October by, excuse me, by an arboricultural consultant acting on behalf of the owner of Stratford Road. Upon the variation of the order, an amended objection was submitted by the same consultant, consisting of the original objection with a cover letter. And you can find a copy of that objection at appendix E alongside a summary of the objection and my response to those points made. A second objection was also received in regards to the varied order. Again, a summary of the objection and response can be found in the body of the report. With regards to the amenity assessment of the trees, the six trees which were included for protection are in a very elevated position adjacent to Tom Lane and Carset Kilcrezm. As such, they're visible from a number of locations and are prominent within the street scene. The condition of the six trees is generally good, there are some minor defects as listed within the individual tempo assessments in appendix E, but none of these overtly impact on the structural integrity or health of the trees in question. They're grown within a large garden with ample space to reach maturity without coming into conflict with adjacent structures in a manner that would curtail their potential retention. And I think that removal of competing and suppressing trees has probably improved prospects for those that remain, resulting in trees that have sufficient retention span to be considered suitable for inclusion in a TPO. With regards contribution to the landscape, the trees are not within, but they do stand adjacent to the Ramall Conservation Area, which is characterised by large gardens containing mature trees. Retention of those of suitable form, condition and visibility was deemed as desirable, given the prominence of said trees with regards to their size and elevated position over the highway. And finally, with regards expediency, the trees were in the process of being removed when the original order was made. Thank you.
Are there any members' questions regarding this? Councillor Chapman?
Thank you Chair. I'm certainly broadly in favour of this TPO, but given that the main objection is the loss of light to the person or persons living within the dwelling on that site, is it still possible for them to have a sensitive pollarding treatment carried out at a future date to thin out some of the foliage on those trees that are TPO listed?
Yeah, I mean, the trees, if the confirmation goes ahead, the trees will be subject to TPO regulations, and there's nothing within those that prevent maintenance or good works being carried out. It would just be subject to an application which would come through, it would be assessed by myself and I'd make that kind of recommendation as to whether we should allow that application to go forward or not. I think pollarding, probably not, you know, pollarding of mature trees is kind of more commonly known as topping and isn't something that we generally are in support of. I don't want to get too kind of deeply into a conversation about pollarding versus topping.
I still do use that word.
No problem. But we would definitely kind of allow or consent to works that are reasonable and that are not detrimental to the health and amenity of the tree. I think also within the garden, there's probably an awful lot more light there now than there used to be because a large number of the trees have gone.
Any other questions? Okay, councillor Linus?
Thank you Chair. Yeah, just on page forty seven, the Google Maps picture from the sky shows a mass of trees, and I can see the issues with light, but that's clearly out of date now, isn't it? So what's left?
You can see, I think there is a photo on page forty that will show you the trees that are remaining. It's a little bit misleading actually because the trees that are shown on page forty are not in leaf, whereas the Google images are trees that kind of are. But yeah, I mean, I think, how many trees did I say there originally were? There are six trees remaining which are protected, and I can't remember now how many there were, but a substantial number have been removed.
So the light positioning was fully dramatic with?
I would think so.
Chair, I've moved the recommendation.
Any more comments? Shall we take a vote then, please? Laura?
For the recommendation Chair.
Support recommendations.
Support the recommendation Chair.
In favour of the officer recommendation Chair.
Support, support the recommendation.
Sorry, yeah, support the recommendation.
Support the recommendation.
Support recommendation Chair. Yeah, for the recommendation Chair.
Thank you, that's passed, thank you. So we've been moving on now to item number eight, and just one application today. Councillor? Are you leaving councillor Notteage? So item eight on the agenda, eight A, planning application number twenty three oblique zero three eight nine two, full, tennis courts at Hillsborough Park, Midwood Road Sheffield, S six four HD, and it's page fifty seven in the Agenda Pack documents. And the officers to speak on this, Andrew?
Yes, thank you very much Chair. So the site relates to Hillsborough Park in North West Sheffield. As many people will be familiar with, Hillsborough Park is one of the largest and most high-profile parks in the city. Surrounding roads include the A sixty one Peniston Road to the east, Parkside Road to the north, Midwood Road to the west, and Hillsborough District Centre is located to the south. The park has the status of a historic park, with it also being in the conservation area, and it also contains a number of listed buildings and structures, including the library, the former park lodges, and some of the boundary walls and gates. Specifically, the application relates to the existing tennis courts and multi-use games area that is located in the north-east part of the park near to the A sixty one Peniston Road. This part of the park is located immediately adjacent to the recently created pump track, which is for bikes and scooters, and also the learn to ride a bike area that is both located immediately to the south. To the west is the duck pond area. To the north is a tree-lined footpath which forms the main route passing through the park, running from the Peniston Road entrance all the way through to the other main entrances on the Midwood roadside. Immediately behind that is the largest public car park that is located within the confines of the park, which is entrance from Parkside Road. To the north-west is the largest area of open grassland within the park that is used for informal play, ball games, and the main stage area for tram lines festival. Peniston Road is to the east, on the opposite side of the road is Hillsborough Leisure Centre. The nearest residential properties are located to the south on Broton Road beyond the pump track and additional parkland. The site is currently made up of four tennis courts and a very large multi-use games court of about the same size, which both sit side by side by one another. In addition, the site also includes the learn to ride area which is positioned just to the south of the multi-use games court. Also includes a smaller rectangular area of grass in the top right hand corner of the slide, next to where it has a, sorry, it has an outdoor table tennis fixture on it. Tennis courts are enclosed by high-level perimeter fencing, and there's a fence on two sides of the multi-use games area behind the built-in goal and basketball net areas. There are existing floodlighting columns saving the tennis courts, the pump track, and the multi-use games areas. The proposal is to redevelop and reconfigure the existing tennis courts and multi-use games areas to create a community building that would include a cafe and space for exercise classes, yoga, community meetings and public toilets, an outdoor activity space to the rear of the community building, the retention of three of the tennis courts, with one of those also being suitable for netball, two brand-new enclosed paddle tennis courts, a new mini-golf area, the retention of reduced-size multi-use games area, an extension of the learn to ride to bike area with new strips added to the north and the south. This slide shows the proposed elevations on the northern side frontage with the community building on the right-hand side of the top image, on the left-hand side at the top, and at the bottom is a proposed new roof canopy to provide cover to the paddle tennis courts. The maximum height of the roof canopy structures would be approximately eight and a half metres. Also shown on these elevation plans is the fencing proposed around the perimeter of the games court areas. This will be fencing of the green at powder-coated wire mesh type at a height of four metres. This is similar to the previous slide, but it's showing the proposed elevations of the community building, the paddle tennis courts, the roof canopies and the fencing from views to the rear on the eastern Peniston roadside. This slide shows the front and rear elevations of the proposed community building. As you can see, it would be a single-storey building measuring approximately twenty-eight metres in length by seventeen metres in depth. It'd have a height of approximately five and a half metres. Facing materials are proposed to be a natural stone of plinth and stone-coloured render above. This would be both the side elevations. The building would have a monopitch roof with canopies on both sides above the front and rear entrances to the building. This slide shows the proposed floor plans for the community building. The largest area would be an activity space which is intended to be used for exercise classes, yoga and community meetings. In addition, the building would include a cafe area that would be complete with a small kitchen, a seating area and toilet facilities. The application has been the subject of thirty representations from members of the public at the time of writing the reports. So that means that we've had eighteen objections, ten in support and two in neutral comments. Subsequent to that, the supplementary committee report explains that a further four objections have been received since the time of writing. The main objection themes are loss of some of the free-to-use facilities, concerns about the introduction of a further cafe within the park, perceived commercialisation of the park, the potential impact on cycling for all due to the reduced-size multi-use games court area which they use for cycling. In terms of representations in support, several comments are in favour of interruption of new and improved facilities within the park, including the paddle courts. Other representations in support have been submitted from Sheffield Wednesday, the Yorkshire Sport Foundation and the Burton Street Foundation, who all feel that they would benefit from the new facilities as part of their own activity programmes. In the applicant's planning statement, they've explained that proposals have been subject to a variety of consultation with different user groups that include Sheffield Cycling For All, the Loan Tennis Association, Park Run, netballers, paddle players and local residents. It's been through twenty iterations before arriving at the current proposals. And so just talking about to summarise the assessment of the proposal that's been carried out by officers, so there's lengthy committee report that explains all the different assessment criteria. In policy terms, the proposals are considered to represent the enhancement of existing formal sport and recreation facilities and are fully supported by officers and Sport England as a form of upgrade having regard to the relevant national and local policies. Visual immunity wise, many of the facilities are existing in this area of the park, and so the magnitude of change would be relatively low. The proposals are therefore considered to respect the character of Hillsborough Park as being a historic park, conservation area and would not harm the setting of listed buildings. The implications for residential amenity are considered to be fairly low due to the separation distances involved to the nearest residential properties. Obviously, we've got a lot of the facilities are existing in this part of the park, but notwithstanding that, some safeguards are proposed within the conditions in terms of stipulating that the floodlights would need to be switched off no later than nine thirty PM at night time. In highway terms, the park is very accessible to the community that it serves, it's very accessible by public transport with the super tram and bus routes nearby and bus stops. The park, this area of the park also has a public car park located immediately next to it. And so overall, proposals are considered to be a suitable and acceptable proposal to officers, and the recommendation is to approve subject to the conditions listed in the report. Just in addition to that, we have picked up that since the report was published, there's a couple of minor discrepancies to the conditions, so those discrepancies are explained within the supplementary report. So condition eleven should specify a permitted use time between seven AM and ten PM rather than ten AM. And also the drainage condition number five needs wording added at the end to require the development to be constructed in accordance with the approved drainage scheme. So on that note, I will hand back to the Chair.
Thank you Andrew. Okay. And now I'm going to invite people to speak for and against, we've had some people contact us, so could we have Leah Byatt, please? Switch that on.
Leah Byatt speaking on behalf of Save Our Parks. The two thousand plus strong petition presented to the Charity Trustee Subcommittee by Friends of Hillsborough Park last year is only the tip of the iceberg when it comes to community opposition to these proposals. In the council document title consideration of objections to leases regarding parks tennis, it is documented that seventy-six out of the seventy-seven responses to the public noted were objections to disposal of land which are... And we have carried out our own consultation methods, including leafletting, canvassing and discussion with community members at several Hillsborough Park run events, and still around seventy per cent of local people we speak to are unaware of the proposal, highlighting the limited reach of the consultation efforts thus far. Questions have been raised as to whether the disposal of this land, as well as other charitable lands such as Graves Park, that will be impacted by the proposed twenty-five year lease, is even lawful. It is even, it is unclear whether the trustee has the right to dispose of this land without first getting permission from the Charity Commission. Land in Hillsborough Park is supposed to be protected from sale or disposal as it is a charitable trust park, and this seriously needs addressing and investigating before any proposals are given further consideration. In addition, promises and assurances previously made to Friends of Hillsborough Park that the muggle and outdoor activity space would sit outside the structure and remain public land have been violated by the planning documents indicating that it will be enclosed in four metre fencing. This also contradicts research made by Make Space For Girls on requirements for safer parks, which states that both women and girls felt that fences or walls round the edge of a public space made them feel less safe by limiting both escape and visibility. Precondition three, which states the hub is not to be used for purposes other than outdoor sports and play, is violated by the intention to use the... is violated by the intention to use the smaller mugger and tennis courts as the tramline's access gate. The covered paddle tennis courts with canopies will seriously detract from the Grade Two listed east lodge and gateway which is situated next to the proposed development. Not to mention there are environmental factors to be considered such as the damage that would be caused to bird habitats by the removal of more hedging. And the lighting that is to be used on the hub has a temperature of 4000 Kelvin, which according to Bat Conservation Trust, a warm white spectrum ideally less than 2700 Kelvin should be adopted to reduce blue light component. I work at Friends Together, a disability support provider located just opposite Hillsborough Park on Midwood Road. Despite the fact we use the mugger regularly for various sporting activities, we have not been approached once for consultation on the project. The consultation processes documented contain no mention of others such disabled groups being approached despite the fact we are aware of several others who regularly use the space and should be considered as stakeholders. Burton Street are cited as being in support of the proposal but Claire Mapping confirms this is not the official Burton Street position. Several accessibility barriers do not appear to have been considered at all such as the fact that online booking systems aren't accessible to those who lack the ability to make a digital booking or only have access to cash as their available currency. The smaller mugger footprint will automatically make it less accessible to groups like ours who must ensure our activities are able to facilitate multiple service users at a time, many of whom use various forms of mobility aids. And whilst the council may believe that the proposed fees for the pay-to-use activities are reasonable for the average individual, it has neglected to consider group bookings that would be made by community groups like ours who would need to raise our service fees to cover the cost to access an area we have previously been able to use for free. It is important to note that the proposal will lease the area to Courtside CIC for a total of 25 years and maintenance of the area will fall on Courtside CIC. The current occupiers of the tennis courts are Premier Tennis, which has the same director and from our research, employees of Courtside CIC. The council itself has stated in documentation that the deteriorating conditions of the existing tennis and multi-use games area provision are not city standard. If it is Courtside CIC's negligence that has led to the deteriorated state of the tennis courts as they are now, can it really be trusted to maintain a large proportion of the area for 25 years? Proper maintenance of this area has not been carried out. My workplace contacted Premier Tennis back in 2022 regarding the concrete ramp that leads up to the entrance to the tennis courts which is supposed to make the area wheelchair accessible. The ramp is covered in moss with a crack down the centre making it a health and safety hazard and therefore inaccessible. Two years have now passed and the ramp remains inaccessible as Premier Tennis believes responsibility lies with the council and the council believes responsibility lies with Premier Tennis. If this is how Courtside CIC has responded to maintenance issues that have arisen in the past, it does not bode well for the 25 years they would take responsibility for the area. If the tennis courts were run properly by the community, it would surely be of more benefit to the community and could be used to generate an income for the park.
Thank you, Leah. Right, could I... We now have Isabel Wells, please. You have five minutes.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak today in support of the Hillsborough Multi-Activity Hub. My name is Isabel Wells and I have been project managing the proposed plans that are in front of you today. As a fellow Sheffielder living a few miles from Hillsborough and working previously as participation manager at Sheffield Wednesday, I believe there is a real need to improve facilities in this part of Sheffield and the proposed community hub will do that, offering new social and physical activities for people of all ages and backgrounds. It is something I am personally passionate about. The council's planning team report is comprehensive and addresses key points of planning law. A few noteworthy examples include maintaining and enhancing the heritage of the park with recreational facilities dating back almost 100 years being upgraded for future generations. Fitting in with the ambient noise of the park which borders a busy two-lane highway and a well-used pump track. Improving landscaping and achieving a biodiversity net gain of over 500%. The recommended conditions are sensible and proportionate and we will comply with them through a drainage scheme which enhances the park's current infrastructure and reduces future flood risks. Sports facilities will be built to stringent Sporting England standards, including brand-new safe porous surfaces, equipment and lighting. Sample materials will be agreed in advance so that the walls, roofs, windows, doors and shutters are in keeping with the park and sit well in the protected conservation area. Getting to this point has not been without its challenges. This project was first discussed back in 2016, has been interrupted by a pandemic, gone through several council-approved procedures in the past two years and has included local consultation both publicly and specifically within nearby schools, indicating overwhelming support. An open procurement process has taken place and significant funds have been secured with only 12% of overall costs coming from the council via section 106 funding. We are all well aware that not everyone is in agreement with the proposed facility improvements and we recognise that change can be difficult. At all stages, we have listened to stakeholders including Sheffield Cycling For All, Parks Friends of the Park, Park Run, Tram Lines, South Yorkshire Police, Sheffield Wednesday, pump track mugger and tennis court users, councillors and parks and countryside staff, adapting our desires to arrive at a better site plan that has accessibility, sustainability and affordability at the heart. Given that there have been various comments about the proposed hub, including suggesting that this might be privatisation of the park, I would like to say as a matter of public record that the mugger will be fully resurfaced with new equipment, line marking and modern LED relighting. It will be resized to Sporting England recommended dimensions allowing for recreational five-a-side football and four separate games of basketball. It will link with the pump track as a space that is open to all and it will be free to use forever. New toilets and water supply in the park will be free to use by anyone. A flexible communal outdoor space free for anyone to enjoy. Free holiday and food camps will be offered to local children who face disadvantage. Income generated from other facilities and activities and from food and drink, all at good value price points to suit the local area, will help cross-subsidise exercise options for those who face economic barriers to participate. Maintenance fees to look after facilities will be ring-fenced to benefit the Hillsborough Park charity. Sheffield Cycling For All will be accommodated on the extended learn-to-ride area, the widened park pathways and the new mugger. The whole site will be wheelchair-friendly and a leading example of a community facility accessible to those with any disability, seen or unseen. The hub will link with other organisations, charities and individuals who care as we do about getting more people to move more and connect better with their fellow residents. In summary, we hope you are satisfied today with three things. One, that planning guidance has been respected. Two, that the recommended conditions will ensure quality development. And three, that the huge public benefits of this community hub outweigh any perceived harm. A decision today to provide planning consent will unlock significant partnership funding and allow the hub to employ local people like myself, who in turn will serve local people of all ages and abilities now and into the future, making Hillsborough an even better place to live, work and visit. Thank you.
Thank you, Isabel. Would you like to comment, Andrew?
Not at this stage, thank you.
Right, do we have any questions from members? councillor Downing?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you both to the objector and to the person that's presented the in favour of. It's a massive park. It's a massive park and I can't see from this point where it's going to detract from that. The only thing I would question at the moment, in my view, is the way that the tennis courts have always been payable as they use them. But is there any way possible that it could be conditioned that are different or not so much different, another way of paying if you're not if you're not used to using a digital payment system? Thank you, Chair.
Do you want to answer that?
I don't see anything especially wrong about that. I mean, obviously, it's a little bit borderline as to what's a material planning consideration and what's a lawful condition in terms of putting anything on about governing fees and charges. But then again, I think if it's just either a directive or just a loose condition which just specifies that there could be different options on how payments are made.
councillor Chaplin?
Thank you, Chair. The first speaker made comments about the fact that the the courts and facilities that they're set out at the moment are not not very accessible for people with disability. So what I'd like to know is whether these proposals have have got have been made disability-friendly so that people can readily access all parts of the the premises that are being built up, both the sporting facilities and inside the cafe in the centre.
Yeah, so if I understood that correctly, is that a question about disability access? I mean, some of that will be subject to control under the building regulations rather than planning as far as the building is concerned. I mean, it is a single-storey building. I think that's possibly one of the things that, say, counted against. I think one of the suggestions is that the listed former park lodge on the eastern boundary of the park was possibly looked at as being used as a cafe instead of a new building. But obviously, that's an old building and it's two-storey. So the fact that you can have a single-storey building that's built to modern requirements in respect of the Disability Discrimination Act requirements and building regulations should mean that that's a much more favourable option from that perspective. Something else is that this part of the park is the lowest part of the park. It's very flat topography down there. So I think certainly the courts themselves, the surrounding footpaths and all the footpaths that link to it are all quite level in that particular part of the park.
Damashtis?
Thank you, Chair. It's about the loud in the proposed cafe. I mean, there's no changing, if you can put up the appropriate slide. And there's no changing facilities unless, I mean, I can't see it too well, but it's quite a big space. There are three or four toilets which presumably would serve users of the outside area as well as the inside area and no changing facilities. Does that restrict the activities that can possibly take place there? I think I see a shower there as well.
Yeah, I wasn't sure if it was a shower or a baby change, to be honest. I think it's possibly a baby change that in the centre. Yeah, I mean, it's a multi-use space is the activity room. So it could be for community meetings, it could be fit for gym classes. But I suppose that the expectation would be, just like at gyms and things like that, that people come already changed when they're coming for a specific class.
What about the toilet facilities? Is that house sufficient for all users inside and out?
Well, obviously, there's no public toilets down this specific end of the park. The nearest ones are towards the Midwood Road side near the depot bakery. So I think just to have any level of public toilet provision down this end of the park is of benefit. So I can see there's four cubicles there. So that should benefit all the different user groups down there.
So basically, you're saying because there's none at the moment and there's going to be four, that's a benefit?
Yes, most definitely, yes, because as we've heard from the applicant, the intention is for them to be freely accessible to members of the public.
There's one more point. I notice that there is sort of, there's to be no music, outside speakers, all the rest of it now. Knowing how people congregate outside, is there any way of stopping users of, say, those areas resorting to loud music of their own? Or is that just something that you can't factor in?
You're talking about visitors to, like, say, the mugger or yeah, I think that would just fall outside of any scope of any particular regulatory power.
councillor Davidson?
Thank you, Chair. I've been familiar with Hillsborough Park for a long time. In fact, I can remember where the running track was and I can even remember before the running track was put in place. It was all, it was actually flattened out in that area and there was a pavilion built at that end and presumably there was community use there. Now, are the toilets used there also for that end of the the end of the park? Because it does seem that it's rather sparse because it is a destination park. It doesn't have many toilets. So is, does that provide a facility for anybody who actually is in that end of the park?
Yes, that's right. So they talked about the section of the park that's nearest to Peniston Road. It's got facilities there, formal recreation ones already in terms of the tennis courts. Obviously, there are these new facilities there which is hopefully going to increase the range of options and actually draw more people in. So to not have toilets there at the moment is, I'd say, is a hindrance for all sorts of reasons.
I know it is used communally at times, but it's also got dressing, sorry, changing changing rooms for football, I presume, that there are football pitches alongside that area. So in that park, you've got the football, you've got excellent bowling green and I believe croquet is played there too. And now the tennis courts look a bit pretty shoddy. So a part of this condition is the improvement presumably of the playing surfaces of the tennis courts?
Yes, there is going to be resurfacing of all the courts. So yeah, we heard that from the applicant representative when they spoke. So that's going to be one of the major benefits of the proposals, that we get resurfacing. There's a modern specification that's going to have to be to Sporting England standard. So it's going to be better for drainage, it's going to have new markings provided on it. In terms of the bowling green area of the park, that's actually some distance away. That's over at the western Midwood roadside. So I'd say that any provisions which are up there that's existing are a significant distance to travel. You know, if anybody's needing the toilet more urgently.
What, I mean, you did mention that there were listed buildings because it's a conservation area and one of them, of course, is the old house, which was the old library. In fact, it was the first library that I joined. Down at the bottom, we've got what used to be the Parkkeeper's Lodge, it's all boarded up and it's a preserved building. Are we going to bring that into use? Is there any plans for that?
It's outside the scope of this application. So that's as much as I can say. I only speculated earlier that perhaps the fact that that's a two-storey building and it's listed would be, make it a little bit more difficult to convey and make into the use what's proposed to accommodate within the new building, which does form part of this application. Yeah, for obvious practical reasons. But just in factual terms, that building doesn't form part of this application.
Yeah, I mean, one of the things that if you're going to develop, you want to see that what is also in existence is developed as well, not just taking away land that is, you know, used for recreational purposes. But it is only a small section of the park as councillor Downing's point points out. It is a large park and it's a small section. So the floodlights were the other point that was brought up by the objector. And how much research has been done into how that would affect, you know, the And how, how much research has been done into how that would affect, you know, the nature in that area? And particularly bats? Do we, are there places where the bats actually live?
Yeah, I've just brought up a new photo onto the screen. So on that, you'll see that's the existing floodlights which are in place. So they're an older-style floodlight which would have more light spillage. And the proposal is to replace that within the confines of the new reconfigured areas with more up-to-date LED floodlighting, which would be better in terms of minimising light spillage.
Yeah, so light pollution. So all the lights would be concentrated downwards?
No. Yes, it would be, yeah, there'd be less spillage. So I think it's high technology, and it would be better from the perspective of, you know, reducing the impact on bat foraging and other biodiversity.
All right. What about this, I confess I didn't know anything about the extra heat that this, of course, any lighting will provide extra heat, but I don't know what the intensity of this heat is that was brought up by the objector. Can you explain whether that would or would not be a problem?
So that's, that might be outside of my area of specialist knowledge.
Has anybody looked into it?
Is it in terms of, so, an impact on anything specific?
On the wildlife?
On the wildlife? Well, I mean, it's just that, I suppose we've got all the technology floodlights that are in place at the moment, and they'll be replaced with something which is better and more up-to-date. So I think that could only be an improvement on the current situation and hopefully less heat as well as less light pollution.
Okay, I'll leave you there. Thank you.
Right, councillor Hurst?
Thank you, Chair. I'm afraid I'm going to continue with Roger's bat theme, because that was going to be my question. I believe I caught the objector saying that the lighting specified was at the wrong end of the spectrum or would interfere with bats, but I can't see anything about that in the report. I mean, it does say in, on page 74, that there has been a preliminary survey undertaken of the site for nesting birds, foraging bats and bat roosts, and that bat and bird boxes will be installed, and that light spill may indirectly affect them. But it doesn't say anything about the technical specification of the lights that would be so used. And I can't find anything in condition three about the technical details that would be agreed afterwards, except that we would consider those. If we are intending to put, it doesn't look as if there are, the phrase is rather complicated. It says that the report concluded that there is unlikely to be any such feature by which, I'm assuming, nesting birds, foraging bats and bat roosts, which would constrain the redevelopment of the site, and there would be no direct impact. But if we're introducing bat boxes and bird boxes, could we specify in the condition that we would choose an appropriate level of lighting so as not to disturb their foraging or roosting in the area? I'm sorry, I know that was a very technical question, but I just couldn't see anything relating to the specification of light.
Yeah, it's all right. So yeah, so I've just gone to the same page as the report as well. So page 74 said that, that obviously talks about the ecology assessments that have been carried out, so they've been qualified by qualified professional ecologists. I mean, something I was going to mention, it was like my click has got stuck, sorry, on this screen. So you've got that row of trees, which is on the site frontage. Now, none of those are due to be impacted by the development. Yeah, thank you, let's move on, hopefully. Yeah, here we go. So yeah, if you could see now on the top of that slide, so all that row of mature trees there, that would be, they'd all stay in situ, and we've got a condition on as well, just to follow through on the protection details, just to make absolutely sure that's the case. I mean, the ecology reports, they've suggested that there would be no direct impacts on any protected species, including bats. There's a mention that light spill may indirectly affect them, but that was not seen as a constraint to the proposals. There's, I think, on the conditions, obviously, it talks, there's one there which, there's a stipulation about that the floodlighting would be switched off no later than 9.30pm at night time. So that's something else that's got to be of benefit to the ecology. So we consulted with ecology on the application and no objections have been forthcoming. So I think that's an indication to us, at least, that they're content with the details that's been submitted already in respect of the proposed floodlight columns, and that they're hopefully seen as an improvement to the existing ones. So I don't know if that answers it, or if you're still keen to see, say, a condition which requires a process of details being submitted on detailed specifications so they can be reviewed by us and the ecology team prior to us discharging the condition.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I think that would be quite useful. I mean, if there are roosting, foraging bats and we are putting bat and bird roosts in there, we know that they may be affected by light spill. Wouldn't it be belt and braces, shall we say, to ask for the, when we get to the technical specification stage, that the lights that are installed would be at an appropriate wavelength? I don't know what we would, how we would phrase that. I'm looking at Bob.
It's a fairly typical condition if members think it's warranted, notwithstanding what my colleague has said about the view from ecology. If members want the lighting to be subject to a scheme for approval and only the lighting that is approved installed, then you could have that condition. And it's a sort of condition that officers readily attach where there's a need for that. Clearly, the officers take the view that the lighting proposal you've got here is satisfactory, but it's up to you if you think that's not the case.
Yeah, I can, I can see that and that officers think it's better, but I can't unpick anywhere where it does say that the lighting that is going to be installed is within the prescribed limits that wouldn't affect bats and birds, and I can't see that. So maybe it's just a technical question that I need, I need answering, or perhaps we just need, if I propose that we attach a condition that we put, we assess the lighting under a technical scheme?
Yeah, I mean, I think that that exercise has been undertaken in the sense that, you know, details have been submitted of the proposed lighting columns within this application. We consulted the ecology team, there's been an ecological assessment undertaken and submitted with the application by the relevant experts. And it, you know, it's not saying that there'd be any roosts impacted, because it's primarily bat roosts which are protected as opposed to foraging habitat. I mean, it's an existing facility, there's existing floodlight columns. It's important that the formal recreation, you know, intention of the proposal can function properly. So with that comes the need for the new floodlighting columns. So that's all been taken into account of as part of the assessment. And so, you know, it's been put to the details are acceptable.
Chair, can I say, sort of, is it possible, I mean, like Diane says, to sort of put in a condition, sort of, subject to sort of more detailed, more detailed information about the lighting proposed to ensure it doesn't impact on the wildlife? Because that's not actually changing anything in here, it's just saying that sort of we've looked at it and we just wanted to be sure that sort of, you know, we're not passing something that we could change at this stage, but if it's appropriate.
So if councillor Hurst wants to make a proposal, do you want to second the proposal, councillor Masters, an additional?
I'd be happy to second it, but Roger raised it as well, so he might want to second it. So, Madam Chair, pick anyone from three for your proposal and second it.
Oh, sorry, there's councillor Williams here.
Thank you, Chair. Could you turn your thing off, please, Roger?
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, just on page 74, it does talk about a preliminary roost assessment that concluded there would be no direct impact on bats and birds, the light spill may indirectly affect them, but this was not seen as a constraint of the proposal. To me, that sounds as if some work has been done, and the conclusion is by people who assume they're experts that it's not a particular issue. So does it need to be, does it need a condition? I mean, I'm not throwing the bats and birds out with the bathwater, that's a metaphor, but perhaps the officers can give a bit more detail of what actually went into that assessment.
I'm not opposed to bats and birds, I like them quite a lot, but I think if, I don't know what more we're going to get if we've had an ecological survey. If the ecological experts are happy with it, I don't profess to know more than them. So if they think it's acceptable, then I don't know why we're putting another condition on, because all we'd be doing is asking them to say the same thing again.
councillor Price?
Support that. We have pictures across this city on schools that have all got floodlights on, all LED lighting that has been proposed, and this is not, obviously, the city's quite expert at lighting outside play areas. It's 50 yards from a dual carriageway, which is LED-lit. I just don't understand how it's going to affect wildlife, the ducks on the pond. So there's already lighting there, floodlighting round the pitches, and it's going to be replaced by LED lighting, which is less energy-consuming. So I just don't understand why there's a necessity to change it yet.
No, it was just the fact that sort of, you know, if it's a slightly different spectrum light, that was all, but I mean, it sounds from the comments that people are not in favour of putting in a condition, so.
Thank you, Chair. I have to say that if this different spectrum lighting is adversely affecting bats, then we've implemented this all across the city with low-energy LED lighting. And I've yet to see any evidence that we've, I mean, we know wildlife is on the decline and there is a nature emergency as well as a climate emergency, but I would have thought of this, we would have caused a catastrophic loss of bats and birds if the LED lighting was adversely affecting them. I just have two questions now. One I should have picked up earlier, the first speaker who was putting her objections forward repeatedly mentioned disposal of Hillsborough Park, and I would really like an officer's response to that. I did think you were going to give that earlier, because I cannot find anywhere in the report that actually gives any substance to that view that Hillsborough Park is being disposed of. And the other thing is, with the late additional representations, 15 in all, as I've read down the list, I'm looking to see if any single one of them would actually be a material reason for refusal of this planning application. I mean, to take the second one there, the third one there, the existing tennis courts are rarely used or continual attempts to cash in on the park, do they actually amount to being material reasons for refusal?
It says the free facilities are popular.
Yeah. They're listed as objections, so that's, I just want to know if any of them actually amount to being material objections that we could.
I think to start off with, I just want to make a bit of a separation. Obviously, you've got the council parks section probably more involved with this on the side of the applicants, whereas what's before us today is a planning decision. So we've just carried out an assessment of the proposal on its merits and determined, and taken the view that they're acceptable as a form of enhancement. So yeah, I don't think we can really comment on that, you know, assertion that the park's been disposed of, that, you know, we wouldn't obviously support this application if we didn't think that the proposals represent an improvement and enhancement. But yeah, I think we do need to just separate ourselves from, you know, what we're considering as part of the planning decision and, you know, an assertion that might be labelled at, you know, Park Services and how we look after our parks.
councillor Williams, you want to come in again?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Yeah, it's really a kind of a comment stroke question. It would seem a shame and a missed opportunity, and I apologise if I've missed it from the report, not to include some form of electric bike recharging points on this building. I don't see it as a condition, but perhaps a suggestion to the applicant that that would fit in quite nicely with the whole theme of the place, and it perhaps would encourage people coming from a little bit further away. I mean, Hillsborough Park is a city park, it's not a local park, and would it be great if people cycled from, dare I say, Stanington or wherever across the city and south east, thank you councillor Chaplin, and have enough confidence that they could recharge their bike and cycle home?
Yeah, I know the plans include a cycle parking area, so that's just to the north of the main footpath, just above trees numbers one and two. I don't know that there's a proposal for that to include charging points for electric cycles though, but it does at least mean that would be some cycle parking provision as part of this proposal.
I don't see it as any way of reason to refuse this, I just think it would be the cherry on top of the cake, really.
Could I second this as a condition? As proposed by councillor Williams?
Sorry, that wasn't, I wasn't asking for a condition, I was merely asking, do they still have informatives of planning? But it would just be a nice suggestion to the applicant to do that.
Yes, we do have directives where we can include specific recommendations to applicants for things that we fall outside of the scope of our legislation. I'm not saying that necessarily would, to be honest, but it's not part of the proposals. I think we can just include that as a recommendation within a directive.
Was that a direct proposal, councillor? Was that a direct proposal, councillor Williams, or just a comment? It was a question, really? Okay, fine, thank you. Right, so shall we move on to any, any comments? Councillor Price?
Yes, Chair, can I welcome this development? I think it's a superb improvement to the park, it'd be great for young people. We've currently got an area which has required some investment for some time. The tennis courts are in, in need of resurfacing, the mugger needs some investment. We've just got the new cycle route, which is nice, and I think this pulls it all together in a nice unit. I think the, the current lighting, by the way, is in need of replacing for some time. It's old fashioned lighting, and to put LED will improve it and use less energy. I, I think it's, I think the kids in the area will love it, I think it's a, and I hope we can replay, renew this in other parks in our city. It's nice and compact, it brings quite a number of activities together with a cafe. The fact that it's been run outside the city council is not unusual. The golf course in Concord Park is run by the private sector, but it's very well used by the local community. And this, this is replicated around the city, so it's not giving the park away, as people say. It's a, it's a short term lease, really, 20 year lease, that the whole of the community will benefit. It will, it will guarantee improvement if, or repair work being done, unlike it is now. It gets neglected now because of our lack of funding in the city council. And this will give it a future where it's maintained, perhaps much more satisfactory for the benefit of the people in the area. I think it's a tremendous investment, and I welcome it, Chair, and I'll support it.
Councillor Davidson?
Perhaps it's not unusual, but I am going to support what Peter Price has, has said. It's not the only development that has taken place, as I mentioned before. I can think of several, particularly when you put the running track in, and then that disappeared. But before that, there was nothing there. Then they put up a, a, a building in the, in that area, which is the western side. And then there's a very good bowling green, which also has a building in it. And the park can absorb these, these, these kind of facilities. And I think you're right. I'm sure, Peter Price did bring up an important point, actually, about the, the lighting on the road, which, you know, is already there, and it's not that, that far away. So I think that, you know, that's an important point that is brought up. And I think I, I'd have to agree with, with that. Yeah, I'm sure that the lighting should be better because it's, it's more concentrated downwards, so it's not being lost into the atmosphere. Yeah, on the whole, oh, the other thing that was brought up was about the Charity Commission, which is not, actually, this is outside our scope. We are looking at plans, and we, we can't decide on what, what, you know, what the arrangement is with the, with the Charity Commission. So that, that would have to be further on down the line if it hasn't already been sorted. So in the light of what we've, we've seen, I can't see any reason to, to refuse the planning permission on this. Thank you.
Councillor Masterson?
Thank you, Chair. I mean, sort of, I think it's unfortunate the word disposal is used. It's rather emotive, but it is not a sell off, and I absolutely agree with that. This causes a lot of, sort of, of distress, because it's such an emotive word. I'm really pleased that, that my experience, because of the work we've had to do in our parks to improve our facilities, the better the usage, the, the more variety of activities, it reduces antisocial behaviour and gives people pride in the park. So even though if it was possible to tweak things to improve things for wildlife, it'd be great if we could have it. But I'm actually think it's a really good use and development for this area. So I'll be supporting the recommendation, thank you.
Councillor Chaplin?
Thank you, thank you, Chair. I will also be supporting this recommendation. It's, it's quite clear, looking at the tennis and mugger facilities as they are at present, they are, they are getting tired and jaded. They're right next to some smashing new facilities that have only been brought in in the last year or two with, with the, the cycle area and the, and the practice, and the practice area. And, and I think bringing in the, the, the padel tennis, as well as improving the existing tennis courts and putting in a cafe at that end of the park, will, will attract visitors. We know it's popular well beyond Hillsborough, going out into the ward I represent, and out to the north and to the west, over to Stanington, and out from the city, people come to it. It's, it is very much, Hillsborough is very much a local focus for activity. And I, I think this is, it's going to be well used, and it is very, it's a very welcome development. I've got no hesitation in supporting it.
Councillor Moynihan?
I'll be supporting it. I grew up near Hillsborough Park and used to play on those tennis courts regularly. And for those that might be nearly as old as me, Peter, there was a building there. There was, what do you call them? It was like a chalet lodge thing, where you used to go and pay your money to rent your tennis racket and balls, et cetera, and pay to use them. So there was a, there was a facility there, or there was a building there, so, sorry? That's the word, pavilion there. So I think it's really good. And when we're trying to get people active and into a variety of physical activities, this can only be good. And I think it's really important to engage people in physical activities, and this will do it. The advantage of a cafe down at that end is essential, and toilets. Because certainly when you get to my age, you can't get to the top without needing to go. So, sorry, I've brought the tone down.
Councillor Hurst?
Thank you, Chair. I do think it's a reasonable development, but I am disappointed that we haven't given, as a committee, when we have a chance to make things better going forwards, we haven't considered seriously the wavelength of the light, and the, it won't affect the development itself. But if we miss a chance on every application that we approve, we are missing an opportunity to make things better for wildlife. So I would make a plea to officers that as they are developing ecological statements and policies that sit underneath the local plan, they would listen seriously to local groups who have very much more specialist knowledge than we do about bats, about birds, about wildlife, and take account of their views in the development of that pack. Thank you.
Councillor Williams?
Thank you, Chair. I just want to follow up councillor Price's point about this will be a really good development for young people, which it will. It'll also be a very good development for the older generations. Pedal tennis is now becoming one of the fastest growing sports amongst the over 50s. So what we will end up with is a multi-generational facility that will really cross barriers and hopefully bring different age groups together, which again can be an additional positive. Thank you.
Can I just say, being pointed out by Abby, that we had conflict discussion earlier at the very beginning of this, about do we want to do something about making sure people can pay in other ways apart from electronically? And do we want this as a proposal or not? Or is it just a comment?
Sorry, it was just a comment, Chair.
Just a comment?
I just, it was just a follow up of what I've been reading and what I've heard from the, but I don't, I don't, you know. No, it's, it's not a proposal, cheers.
Okay, fine. So can we move forward to take a vote?
Yeah, could I, could I just come in, just in, in terms of that, about the payments? I think on reflection, to be honest with you, I think it does actually fall outside of the matters which we could meet the test for, for a planning condition. So our proposal, how to promote that would be via a directive instead of a condition.
Thank you very much. Okay, so shall we now move to a vote then?
Support the application.
For the recommendation, Chair.
Support recommendations.
Support recommendations, Chair.
For, Chair.
For the recommendation, Chair.
For the recommendation, Chair.
For the recommendation, Chair.
Yeah, I support the application, thank you.
Thanks, everyone, that's passed. Okay, so that concludes the business for today. And the next meeting of the committee will be held on Tuesday 30th of April 24 at 2pm. Thank you.